I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting for December to order. Have the secretary call roll, please.
James Carmen.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Malaika Barlow.
Present.
Christopher Cameron.
Here.
Michael Hyman.
Here.
Michael Wood.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have approval of minutes for the October meeting?
I have one edit, if you don't mind. With respect to page three, the inquiry that I made of the new members was whether or not anyone needed to disclose if they had a current or past relationship with any of the parties or sworn witnesses or representatives to ensure that there was no conflict or that to ensure that they would be impartial. So it wasn't so much that if they recognized anyone, it had to do with the first individual who was coming up in order to speak as a representative. So I would like to make that edit, please, to page three.
So noted.
Thank you.
And just as a clarification, I know in our copy on page two, it indicated that the form that I filled out disclosing my conflict of interest, Form 8B, was attached. And I know it's not in our packet, but I assume that that just means that in the official record, it will be attached. Yep.
It is. Any other corrections or comments? Or motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Report from zoning staff?
Good afternoon. John Roach, principal planner for the city. Just since we're in our last meeting of 2019, just kind of want to do a quick summary. First, as far as the meetings that we had this month, or this year, we actually had several that were canceled for various reasons. But you did have six meetings there that were held throughout the year. A little bit of a summary as far as what those consisted of. The first screen is just with regards to the variances and the types of variances that you saw. All of them were approved. They ranged from the landscape, number of trees, the buffer, driveway separations, all the way into setbacks. And then you had some with regards to waivers within a mixed-use district as well as Class B special use permits. You had two that dealt with convenience stores with fuel sales, the off-site parking lot that was last month. Those both, or all of those included waivers within themselves. And then again, you had two cases involving the mixed-use district. All of those were approved, just so you can see the distribution of cases that you saw within the last year. With regards to the 2020 dates, staff sent you an email today outlining, you know, the dates for the upcoming year. Also, based upon the poll, we, it was determined that January 2nd was not going to have sufficient quorum, so we are proposing to move that meeting to January 9th. And again, your responses on that were that you would be available, so we'll have a quorum for that. So just kind of note that on your calendars. And then everything there outlined is the second, third, or excuse me, the first Thursday of the month, so if you can please note that accordingly. That concludes staff's presentation, but just a couple housekeeping. First is, the first item on the agenda, staff is requesting the continuance to the January meeting. There was some discrepancy in advertising, so we want to rectify that based upon consultation with the board attorney. So we are requesting that continuance. And then Mr. Fields attended the planning officials training seminar that was offered in October, and I think he has a couple words that he's willing to speak to that on, to the board in general, so maybe we could include that under new business or other business at the end of the agenda, so.
Very good. Mr. Chairman? Yes. Just a point for staff. Insofar as you're asking, or we're continuing the first petition, would it be proper for me to ask some questions that might not delay it further when we hear it next month relative to the way it was presented to us, or is that improper?
I'd have to defer to the board attorney. Just to give you an idea, the discrepancy was is that the amount of the variance or the dimension of the variance was incorrectly advertised within the mailer and the legal act. We rectified that as part of the agenda, but because of that discrepancy, we want to push the presentation and the public hearing off to January. As far as, you know, asking questions, I'll defer to Mr. Thomas on that.
Was that what you were inquiring about, the variance or some other?
I'm inquiring about the process, I guess, and the possibility that some additional work could be done in preparing for it, because I'm going to have some questions that I believe will push the petition back further.
Those are questions you'd present the staff to review and have available to you at the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So that that becomes an agenda item, Mr. Chair?
For today?
You entertain that when you decide you want to?
Will that come up after the motion to? Would that be added to this agenda, then, for those specific items relative to?
Yeah, the chair could entertain your questions when he chooses, but I would think that you'd want to continue the item.
Yes.
And then, at your discretion, take his questions.
Okay, fine.
And just to clarify, we will need to preserve, you know, the advertising that has been placed. We would like the board to actually continue the item, make a vote and so forth.
Right.
So just to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest, I don't want to hold up the process with people who are here for the petitions and discuss something that's not on the agenda until maybe after we get through with the business that's here, but then talk about that petition for next meeting before the end of this meeting. I'm at your pleasure.
Are you looking for questions or discussion?
I have, I have discussion and direction to staff, and I don't want to get into it at this point. If it's not, if it's not on, it's going to come up on the next agenda, and I just don't want to delay the petitioner in being heard. But I don't think we have adequate information to hear it.
Okay.
At any point, at this point, right now.
Okay. We'll take the motion afterwards.
Right now, as we move along, we'll go with the process and procedures here. The applicants will make a presentation to the committee, to the board. There'll be questions and answers, questions from the board to the applicants, and then we'll ask members of the audience if they would like to speak for or against. Then we will go into executive session to discuss the information that's given to us. There are five votes for this panel, and the applicant needs four votes for it to pass. Okay? With that being said, is there any declaration of ex parte communications? We'll start on this side.
Alfred Fields, no ex parte communication.
Michael Wood, no ex parte communication.
Chris Hagan, no ex parte communication.
Malaika Barlow, no ex parte communication.
Chris Cameron, no ex parte communications.
Mike Hyman, no ex parte communications.
And I have no ex parte communications. We'll now ask for the swearing in of anyone who wishes to speak at this hearing this afternoon, if they would stand to be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, would you please read the first case, of which afterwards we would entertain a motion to postpone till next meeting?
Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 3378, a request by Greg Arias of El Bosque Property Management LLC for a variance from Section 9472A2D of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations to allow a cumulative side setback of 10 feet 3/4 inches where cumulative side setback of 15 feet is required. The approximately .0675 acre site is located on the west side of Pinewood Avenue between 49th Street and 50th Street within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Schoff.
Okay, motion to.
Also move that we continue this case until the January, or the very next meeting that we convene with the quorum.
Moved in second, is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now move the case number 3377.
Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 3377, a request by Andrew McCown of GAI Consultants on behalf of the Community Asset Preservation Corporation for the following variances to provide for the construction of a single-family residence. A, a variance from Section 94-75A2A to allow the principal building to encroach into the required 25-foot setback, front setback. B, a variance from Section 94-42D1 to construct the driveway within the required 3-foot side yard setback. The approximately .0643 acre site is located at 50821st Street within Commission District Number One, Commissioner Kelly Schoff.
Good afternoon. I thank the board and the members for considering this case today. My name is Andrew McCown, and I'm with GAI Consultants in Orlando, and our office is located at 618 East South Street in Orlando, Florida. So I got four things on our, in our presentation today, just an introduction by the owner, some information on the property, the site plan, and a little discussion about the variant, the two variances that we're requesting today. And I'd like to introduce Craig Vanderlin from Crisis Housing Solutions. He's representing the owner.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Good afternoon, and good afternoon, board. Thank you so much for looking at this variance for us. I wanted to give you a little history, and many of you may recognize me. Earlier this year, you all unanimously approved the variances for Arts on Broadway, which is on Broadway between 27th and 28th Street, and it's that project right there. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of our partners, Community Asset Preservation Corporation out of New Jersey, and obviously Crisis Housing Solutions. One of the things that we thought would be a great exercise with this project was to have our contractors work on, take an exercise and build a two-bedroom, two-bath, similar floor plan of one of the units that we're going to use in this project. So we have them working on that. It's made out of three containers, and we found this lot, we thought containers, you know, one of the great things about containers is they can provide housing on very small lots as well. And so we selected this lot, not recognizing the variances that would be needed, but we're very excited about the project, and our architect, Stephen Bender, has been working very close with Andrew and GAI on this, and he's the same architect as they are for Arts on Broadway. So would like for you to hopefully favorably approve these variances, and we're excited about working very closely with the city, the planning department, housing, and the entire city on this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Craig. So a bit on the property, it's 508, 50821st Street, and it's approximately .06 acres. So there you can see the general location of the site, north of downtown. It is located about one and a half blocks west of North Dixie Highway, US 1, just on the south side of 21st Street in the historic neighborhood of Pleasant City. And I'm sure Rachel will go through all this information also with you, but you can see it's in the multifamily 14 district. And there's a little bit closer up view of the property. You can actually see that this was, this was kind of a leftover legacy of a flaglet, flag lot split that happened at some point in the past. The records on how and when that happened aren't that clear, but it's been quite a long time since that happened. And if you actually, this is one of the things that kind of makes a planner smile when we see this, but if you look at the legal description, the plat on is plat book one, page one, and of course, only a planner is going to chuckle at that. But the lot itself is fairly small, as you see, it's 40 foot by 70 foot, 2,799 square It was previously developed with a single-family residence until about 2002, when that was demolished. And as far as our records can tell, that it was the original structure that was built on the site that was demolished at that time, and no other structures have been constructed on the site since that time. So throughout the neighborhood, there's kind of two prevailing characters. There's the original character of the neighborhood, which is single-family with the houses right up against the street, kind of narrow street, very traditional, single-family type neighborhood that you see all over the city. And as of late, well, not of late, but in the 60s and 70s, you saw more of this coming into the neighborhood where lots were combined in order to build multifamily buildings. Most of them are either duplexes or fourplexes. So the site plan, it's a, it's a two-bed, two-bath, single-family unit constructed of repurposed shipping containers, as Craig mentioned. This unit has three 40-by-8-foot modules that are connected together, and you can see they are oriented in the north-south direction with the driveway to the west side, and there is a small front and back porch landing areas also. And I will, I'll say here, and I'll say again when we talk about the second requested variance, that we originally had the driveway on the east side, and at the request of the city, we did move that to the west side, and the purpose of that was to get the widest separation between the driveway and the nearest structure. So on the, on the east side, we would be kind of on the flag of the lot, but there is a house on the other side of the flag. On the west side is one of those multifamily buildings, and it is, it's set back a ways from, from the property line. So I'll mention that again later. So here's some of the elevations. Again, constructive of three repurposed shipping containers. So the two variances that we're seeking today are both setback variances. The first one is to the front setback, which in this zoning district is 25 feet, and we are seeking a variance of 11 feet to make the new minimum setback 14. We are also seeking a variance from the driveway setback, from a side, side or rear property line, and right now, the standard is three feet, and we are proposing a variance of three feet, making it zero feet. Now, I understand that there is a condition that the city will place on this so that there is at least a one-foot, one-foot space between the driveway concrete and the property line, and I think that should not be a problem. So the first request is to reduce the minimum front setback to 14 feet, and you can see, if you draw the minimum setbacks today on this small lot, it's just very difficult to fit any kind of a single-family structure within those required setbacks. The dimension is actually 38 feet from front to back would be the buildable area, which at 40 feet, you, there's no configuration that, that a shipping container could fit on that. But even barring the particular type of construction that we're proposing, 38 feet is, is very, very shallow to put a single-family house on, and still meet all of the other minimum requirements. So the principal structure setbacks on the sides and the rear, we're, we're meeting And there you can see where the minimum setback, the request of minimum setback would be at 14 feet. I'll just note that in the, in the LDC in Table 31 of Section 9471 says, "All lots within the MF14 that are less than 60 feet wide and 6,000 square feet in area are permitted for a single-family dwelling use." So this, you know, this is something that is contemplated for this type of a, of a lot, and, and we are seeking to, seeking to actually utilize that entitlement. So the literal interpretation of the setbacks means that, that it would be excessively constricting the buildable area of the lot, and therefore, we are, we are requesting a variance from this setback. Variance request two is the driveway setback from 3 foot to zero, and the, I've showed it there again, we've got the three foot versus the zero foot, and then if you break the, this from kind of a, an east and west dimensions, you've got the five-foot minimum setback on the, on the east side, and then the 24-foot modular dimension of the, of the shipping containers, and then you have the 11-foot available for driveway. And as you can see, that with the three-foot setback, we would, we would have something like six feet left over, between six and a half to seven feet for a driveway, which is just not enough for a driveway. And we, we looked at putting parking in the front, and the problem is that we would be, we would be, in encroaching into the setback, we would also not be able to meet the impervious surface requirement of the front setback if we did that, so that, that kind of required us to have the driveway on the side. Oh, and I would also mention there again that, at the request of the city, we did reverse the side that the driveway was on. So that's all I have prepared today. If you have any questions, I am happy to address any of them.
Do you know the reason why, or why the lot is narrow right now?
So the prevailing dimension of the lots in that neighborhood are 50 feet, but when this lot was split at some time in the past, the flag lot that was created took away 10 of those feet for the extra, you know, access from the property behind it. If you look at the, at the aerial, I'll back up just a little bit, you can see there's an alley that splits the block, so the property behind the subject property, from a vehicular standpoint, accesses that rear property from the alley, and then they have a pedestrian walkway to the actual street. And so this, this 10-foot section that was, that was split from this lot further shrunk the, the east-west dimension of the lot. That's why that particular lot is even smaller than the rest of the lots in the neighborhood.
So it's, it's that splitting that's caused the problem, I assume, then, with the dimensions here?
You mean the original split that was done?
Yes.
So with that extra 10 feet, we would have been able to fit the driveway in. It would not have necessarily solved our front setback issue, it would have solved the driveway issue. But that lot split was done 1920s, possibly? Again, the records on that are kind of fuzzy.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I think in looking at it, there's a, it looked like there is a split that, that would have, that occurred that did, that would have affected both of these, because when I look at the other lots that are platted there, they're extending all the way back to what looks like is the alley in the back, so rather than being 70 feet in depth, the other lots look to be closer to 100 and probably 120 or more feet.
Yeah, they're over 100 feet, yep.
So then, the, the building could have been pushed, had, had this split not have occurred, not only would you not have that little nine-and-a-half-foot appendage on the side that affects your driveway width, but also, or the driveway offset from the side, but had it still been a single lot, you could have had the building pushed further back and then not needed the front setback.
Right. And, and as you, as you can note from this exact graphic, that the more recent buildings, they had to join lots together in order to make them compliant with the setback requirements. All of the, the multifamily structures are setback from, from the right-of-way, and they have, and most of them also have access to the, the rear alley also.
Okay. I had another question, but I, okay. The, on the site plan itself, there were also two appendages to the building containers that are on the front and rear that are just labeled porch. Are those covered?
They are covered.
Covered porches? Okay, so that, you know, when you had the overlay that showed the, the building with respect to the various setback lines, it looked like, if you're just looking at the containers, that they could be moved further, right, this, this graphic, they could be moved further to the south to decrease the amount of front setback needed, except that the containers are not the total building envelope, there is a covered porch that's added to the back? So, so in the back, you are right at the setback line, is that correct?
If, if the porches were not there, you could reduce the impact to the front setback, but you, there would still be a two-foot encroachment into the setback, because the, like I said, the, the north-south dimension would be 38 feet, and the container itself is a 40-foot.
Okay. No additional questions?
If I could just add to that, our architect, looking at the aesthetics of the community, he really thought it was important to have a small front porch on the front of the house, which is the other reason why we put that there.
Thank you. Excuse me. Hi. Let me, let me first state that I was, I'm a big fan of the, as you know, as I mentioned, the project on Broadway, and I think it's going to be awesome. I've got some problems with this in the, in the neighborhood, in the character of the neighborhood. This area, the, of the, of the city is going through a rebirth of some sorts. There's some, there's some troubled properties in the area, but for the most part, people are keeping up their homes, there, there, there's some nice areas, there's some construction underway, there's some newer, newer things that are happening, and it's a, it's a coming area, I really feel, and it's been a long time in coming. There, there are a couple things. I think that part of this is a self-imposed hardship, with all due respect, by virtue of the fact that you've got three containers, and the, in looking at the, the floor plan, the third, the third container is really just for spatial purposes, to widen the, the facility. Theoretically, you could have two containers, attach them together with something other than a third container in the center, and I'm not trying to design your project for you, but, but I think you could reduce the width and therefore reduce the, the impact of the setbacks on, on the sides. I'd be interested to know if we have any, any people in the neighborhood who you've spoken to about this? Have you had any conversations with anybody in the neighborhood?
We haven't, we haven't spoken with anyone in the neighborhood in reference to this single-family home.
Okay.
We've had numerous meetings on Arts on Broadway with
Sure.
very favorable response, but not, not on this particular house.
As a starter to that process, were there any letters from surrounding neighbors who, who saw what was anticipated to go in here, or was it just advertised as a setback or, or the different variances? Were there any pictures of what was intended for the area that were sent to the general public of the notice in 600 or 500 feet?
So the mailer that went out was just the city's provided standard mailer?
Okay, so do you know if there were any objections to it that were, that were mailed
The case, for the record, John Roach, principal planner, the case was properly advertised, the flyers went out to everybody within 500 feet, our contact information is put on there. The staff report, which did include the drawings and so forth, were made available online. To our understanding, no one contacted the city with regards to concerns.
Okay, thank you. Do you all own the property, or do you have a contract for purchase?
We, we own it. Our, our partner, Community Asset Preservation Corporation in New Jersey owns it.
In, in looking at the, the different elements of the variance and whether it meets the criteria of those 10 elements, if you will, I've gone through those, and, you know, I, I think that, number one, I think if people knew in the neighborhood that this was coming, you know, the, the normal, the normal response is to vote against something, because they don't know, they're not, not familiar with it. But if they saw the container specifically, and particularly on, on the street and whatnot, I think there'd be some concerns with that, okay? Even though the Broadway piece is, is going to be spectacular, and it's going to be really neat, it's a commercial it's a commercial space, it's something that's out there for people to see, driving by, enjoying whatnot. I don't know that somebody would want to live next door to the containers put together as, as I know you would do it in the best possible, possible way. You used a, a conformity with the neighboring lands relative to the, um, the justification being that there are, there are two other flag lots and similar properties in the neighborhood, which is, you know, didn't speak to the, the specifics of what you wanted to do with it. So I think from that perspective, that conformity is just not there. I don't, I don't see any, any variations, some people trying to do little mo- modern or contemporary things, or there's, there's a basic housing structure, um, fabric through that community. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. And so, I have, um, all, for all of those things, I mean, I, I, I think that you could have done a, a two-story home on the property to have gotten more square footage and to perhaps work better with the, the, um, uh, the setback issues. I, I think that the conformity with the neighborhood is, is out of sync. And I just, for that, that reason, I'm, I'm opposed to the, the petition, okay? Thank you.
So, are you opposed to it from an architectural standpoint?
I'm, I'm opposed to it from the, from the guidelines given to us for what variance, the, the, the criteria that variances should be, um, based upon, okay? So it's the variances and their justification that I object to, to be quite clear, okay?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the project?
Staff report.
Oh. Sorry. My mistake. Staff's presentation.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Rachel Falcone, Associate Planner with the city. Today, I'll be presenting to you ZBA case number three-three-seven-seven, located at five-zero-eight Twenty-first Street for two variances. As you can see, the property is located in the Pleasant City neighborhood. We have a multifamily and single-family next door, and across the street, we have the church and community center, as well as the elementary school. And I'm going to play the site video. So here's the vacant lot, we have the residential surrounding it. And then as we pan right, there's the multifamily residential. And then across the street, we have the church and the community center. And then we have, uh, the elementary school over there. So staff recommendation for the ZBA case number thirty-three-seventy-seven is approval with conditions. Uh, the conditions of approval is for the variance of the driveway setback, and it shall not exceed two feet. A minimum of one foot of setback shall be provided between the driveway and the adjacent property. Uh, the proposal would allow the construction of a reasonably sized, single-family structure with the required off-street parking. Subject to this condition, staff finds that the proposed variances meet all of the standards found in the city's zoning land development regulations, and therefore recommends approval of the variance request. As you can see, the survey here, we have, uh, the lot, it's forty feet by seventy feet, which is a very small lot compared to the others in the neighborhood, which are typically fifty to sixty feet wide by a hundred and, you know, twenty to forty deep. And the variance summary table, we have the front setback, which is required twenty-five feet in the area, and, uh, the proposed setback that the applicant has is fourteen feet. And the side setback for the parking requirement, uh, for the driveway is, they're proposing zero feet. For the side setback, even though, um, the zero feet would provide enough room to enter and exit the vehicle, the zero feet wouldn't allow proper drainage off of the property. So, it would, um, it'll cause unnecessary impact to the neighboring property. So, we're, uh, we're proposing that the applicant provides a, a one-foot setback for the driveway so they don't negatively affect the neighboring property. And we have the site plan here, they are proposing the fourteen-foot front setback and the zero-feet side setback for the driveway. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions?
With that condition, uh, excuse me, then, if I, uh, understand it correctly, the driveway dimension would just go from ten feet, six inches to nine feet, six inches?
Exactly.
And, uh, per city code, the nine foot, six inches is, is sufficient for the driveway, residential driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the project? With that, we will go into executive session. Yes, for any comments?
I have a question. Um, I think Michael raises good and valid points with regards to conformity with the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and architectural styles. But my question, and maybe it's really for the city attorney, are those considerations within our, our bailiwick, our jurisdiction? Or are we limited to just simply considering, um, dimensions and variances? Is there another board, or does this neighborhood fall within another board's jurisdiction with regards to architectural styles?
A variance is not granted for styles. You'd have to find that it meets or does not meet one of the standards that's actually presented at the back of your material. So that if you have an objection, you need to tie that objection to failing to meet one of these standards. If architectural style in the opinion of a board member relates to a standard, that member is entitled to that opinion. But just simply, style is not one of the standards that's in the...
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Just to be clear, okay? Um, my, my concerns specifically tie back to the, um, the compliance with the comprehensive plan, which includes, uh, the protection of the general public, welfare and enjoyment of residents and individual properties. It, it is directly, uh, relative to, uh, public welfare of, of complying in that it, uh, the proposed single-family residential development improves the aesthetic of the block. I, I disagree that it, I say that it does not, that the aesthetic is one of the ten things that we're looking at. That, that H, the reasonable use of the property, can't be put to a reasonable use, which fully complies with the requirement. I believe that there are self-in, self-imposed hardships on this relative to the products that they use that, that didn't have to be used in full. Uh, and finally, in I permitted uses in the same districts, I think that the, uh, that, that this is not, it, it's, it's a non-conforming lot, that may be similar, but it's, uh, the non-conform use of neighboring lands, structures or buildings in the same zoning district shall not be considered grounds for authorization of a variance. Those are the points that I specifically am, am looking at in being opposed to this variance. Thank you. Mr. Roach?
I just want to distinguish that the word aesthetic is being used quite a bit in the discussion, and I want to clarify with regards to the city's regulations. This property is not within a district that has architectural regulations assigned to it. Now, with regards to massing placement of the building, and, you know, the relation of the variance and, and so forth, and the standards that Mr. Thomas referred to, that's fine. But with regards to the material in which the building is made out of, the, the style in which the building is constructed and so forth, those are items that are not regulated by our zoning code within this zoning district, so.
I, I I appreciate that, and I can remove that, um, that, that concern, but would also suggest that maybe the staff look at, uh, the direction to us relative to the compliance that, that's stated in here. So if you don't want us to look at that, let's have a, that, that it doesn't apply in a particular instance. But, Mr. Chairman, one, two, three, four other things bother me with this petition. Thank you. Got a comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Just want to, Angela Van Panen, the zoning administrator, just want to let the board know, and John has said about its stakes. As, as things change in the city, and affordable housing is starting to be constructed, um, we have a lot of leftover lots in the city that the city actually own. I think one of the cases that you saw continue was actually a city-owned lot that was actually sold. And we're starting to see developers coming in with different type of construction. Um, there have been two container homes built in the city of West Palm Beach, uh, in historic districts. And they have gone and got approved from the store preservation board and have been built. So, they are new form of construction, yes, anybody can use a different type of construction, just another form there. And one last thing, if you look at Pleasant City neighborhood, I think over the years, especially on that street, it's a hodgepodge of different things. You have the housing authority, um, right there, you have, um, a church, you have a school. So, in this particular area of Pleasant City, I think if you look at the surrounding area, it's actually a hodgepodge of a lot of different things, multifamily, single-family, duplex, uh, church, a school. So, I understand some of Mr. Hyman's, uh, points, but just to put into the record that that's what we're starting to see over time, that container homes is becoming one of, um, a popular form of construction in the city. And the store preservation board has approved two homes, um, in that district.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could, Angela, where are those two, uh, two other homes in the historic districts?
I think they're in, they are in Northwood Hills, um, Greenwood Avenue. I'm not quite sure the exact location, but the two are on Greenwood.
Okay. Cause I've seen some modular homes go up, and they're quite, quite attractive, they work. But this is not, you know, I, I, I'm just thinking that the character of the neighborhood, the church that we saw, uh, I was just up in the area, and I, and I'm familiar with the area. And the church that's right across the street, you know, comes down right at this property. And I just think it's a, you know, it's, it's a sensitive, uh, situation for the community up there, so. I, the, the property, the project was advertised by the city in the required means and time span. And the lot has been vacant for how long? A while. We don't have to go that far.
Yep.
A while.
He's housing too.
So I, I, I think it's, if it's allowing for housing, regardless of, of where the people come from to live in the housing, if it takes people off the street or whatever, uh, I'm in favor of the project. With that, does anybody have any other comments? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I can make a motion. So I'll move that the zoning board of appeals grant application number thirty-three-seventy-seven a request by Andrew McCown of GAI Consultants on behalf of Community Asset Preservation Corporation for the following variances to provide for the construction of a single-family residence. A variance from section ninety-four dash seventy-five A to A to allow the principal building to encroach into the required twenty-five foot front setback. And a variance from section ninety-four dash forty-two D one to construct the driveway within the required three-foot yard setback. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted in the staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criterion Article Two, Section ninety-four dash thirty-eight D six of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting this variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach. One, the variance for the driveway setback in section ninety-four dash forty-two D one shall not exceed two feet. A minimum of a one-foot setback shall be provided between the driveway and the adjacent property.
I second.
It's been properly moved and second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, will we move to the next case?
Zoning Board of Appeals case number three-three-seven-nine, a request by Joanie Brickman of Urban Design Keel Day Studios on behalf of the children's place at Home Safe Inc. for the approval of Class B special use permit to grant a waiver to an additional standard for use permitted with extra requirements, specifically the twelve-hundred-foot distance separation for a group home type two from another group home required by sections ninety-four dash two-seventy-three D, twenty-eight A two, and C two of the zoning and land development regulations. The approximately three-point-seven-acre subject properties have addresses of five-one-zero-eight and five-one-six-two Forty-seventh Place North, within commission district number four, Commissioner Joseph Paduzzi.
Good afternoon, um, board members. For the record, my name's Joanie Brickman with Urban Design Keel Day Studios, here on behalf of the applicant, which is the children's place at Home Safe. Some of you may be familiar with Home Safe, they've been a member of the city of West Palm Beach community for quite some time. Um, the item before you today is a waiver, rather than a variance request, to a separation distance between CLFs, or group homes, as the city refers to them. Specifically, the waiver is to allow a reduction of seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight feet to allow four-hundred-and-seventy-two feet separation between this proposed group home and an existing group home in the vicinity. And it's a little bit of a unique and unusual situation, I'll explain a little bit for those who go along. Uh, just a little bit of background, Matthew, uh, Latika is here with me today as well, the CEO of Home Safe. Um, Home Safe's mission is to create a safer, more productive lives for infants, childrens, and young adults in the community. They currently operate a group home type three, which houses twenty-four children at the Haverhill Road campus in proximity to this request, actually immediately adjacent to the facility we're asking for the separation reduction to, which is Morris Life. The campus has been operating there for over fifteen years, um, and it's approximately a mile from this site. Haverhill Road, um, campus, um, north of Morris Life, was sold to Morris Life in two thousand and seventeen. Um, they are, uh, Home Safe has, um, determined they're, they're going to approach their operations a little bit differently from this point forward. While that campus currently had twenty-four children there, they have decided to look for separate, smaller sites throughout Palm Beach County. They've already purchased one in an unincorporated county, and have received approvals from the Board of County Commission for twelve children at that site. They're permitting there. Um, they are intending to house twelve, twelve children at this site. So they're breaking their, their group homes up into smaller facilities. This is the proposed site, it's located, um, south of Forty-seventh Place, uh, west of Haverhill Road. The surrounding uses in the area include the, include the Egrit Elementary School directly to the north of the property, multifamily apartments to the east, and a single-family subdivision fox hall to the south and the west. To give you a better idea of, of what we're talking about here, the, um, upper right-hand corner of the screen shows their current facility, which I mentioned was sold recently to Morris Life. And the proposed site is very close to that. Um, both are basically immediately adjacent to a cross right-of-way from the elementary school. And the Morris Life campus, again, currently, this use is immediately adjacent to that campus, and that is the waiver we are requesting. Had we been in a different zoning district here, we are permitted in this zoning district, a multifamily, we wouldn't even be here if we were in community service, because we would meet the separation distance requirements. Again, we're asking for the reduction to four-hundred-and-seventy-two feet. Um, in regards, again, this is not a variance request, it's a waiver request. We did want to go over some of the specific standards. Um, we are consistent with a comprehensive plan. The use we're proposing, um, is consistent with the, uh, multifamily zoning district and land use. We're in harmony with the general character of the neighborhood. As on our Lions Road site, um, we're using the same architect, which is being in Associates. We designed that site and those structures to be residentially compatible, one-story units with a residential feel. We're going to be using the same concept here at this site. The use, again, has been in existence for the, in this area and in this neighborhood for over a decade. Uh, it will not be detrimental to the surrounding properties. When we go through the site plan approval process, through your professional staff's review, we'll meet all property development regulations and buffering, and mitigation of any impact in the surrounding areas will be addressed at that time, including the use of placement of dry retention to help separate from adjacent single-family. Uh, the next standard is detrimental effect on vehicular pedestrian, um, circulation. Forty-seventh Place, uh, while the right-of-way continues all the way west through, it also continues through city-owned property to the water treatment plant there. The, the fact is that- The, the fact is that actually the pavement dead ends just, just almost at the end of our site. So other than our site and the school traffic, there really won't be any impact to this, the vehicular access in the area. There were no, in regards to effect on health and safety and security, the use already has been established in the neighborhood, the operations is actually being reduced in size. They have been a good neighbor to Morris and the school and the surrounding community for many years. It meets the definitions, in order to qualify as a group home, they will have no more than at a maximum fourteen children at any given time at this facility. Licensing requirements through the state will monitor that as well. The use will provide alternative measures to provide protection to adjacent properties. I've already mentioned that, that'll be addressed as part of the site plan approval process. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and as, as I mentioned, Mr. Latika is here as well, and he just did happen to mention he had lunch with the Morris Life's management team, and they're in support of the request too, and he can attest to that as well. I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
You may have answered a question I had, which was, the, the current facility is immediately adjacent to Morris Life, but the reason that that was allowed is, I didn't look up the zoning map, because it's a CS designation today, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I'm overly simplifying here, but the, the, the request provides greater separation than exists today, but you have to come in for a waiver?
Correct.
Okay. The current facility, that's only about, what, fifteen years, ten years old?
I believe they got their CO there in two thousand and six.
And the only reason why you're moving is because you sold it to, you're downsizing the property and splitting to separate facilities, smaller group homes rather than one larger group home?
Yes, they were approached by Morris Life to purchase the property, and that enabled them to use that, let's call it endowment, but additional funds to create, actually, the, the floor plans that they created for these facilities are much more children-oriented, where they each get their own room, they each get their own bathroom, it just creates some of a, more of a independent environment for the children, they think is going to really help in furthering their goals of getting them back into the mainstream.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if you could, in this block that you have here, where is the facility actually going to go? Are those?
These homes that are there, and it's, I know you can't see right, real good, right now, I'm not sure exactly what the, the prior owner was utilizing the property for. There were two single-family structures, some sheds, they had a lot of equipment there. This has been purchased by Children's at Home Safe. So we will be construct, raising those buildings and constructing new buildings under the design created by Spinen and Associates.
Okay, so those homes there, they're all been purchased, they're now owned by your client?
They will be demolished.
Okay. And have you received any comments from the, the residents in the neighborhood?
We have not. Mr. Latika reached out and spoke to the past president of, I believe it's Fox Hall, who was his supporter. We have not received any objections, and I'm not aware that any, the staff has received any as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, for the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. Got a quick little presentation I'll do that may answer some of the questions that the board had. Okay, this is another slide, it's back in the new backup material, the applicant didn't show it. Really shows, here's the four-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-one feet that the distance is between the, the box on the left, which would be the new Home Safe facility, and the Morse Geriatric Center on the right. They are immediately adjacent, and as was, was the earlier question from Mr. Hagan, was about the distance separation, and yes, in community service, there is no def, different, distance separation between group homes. Because they are moving to a multifamily fourteen zone district, there is a distance separation, and that is what they're requesting is the waiver of that standard requires them to be a Class B special use. So that's why we're here today. And what I wanted to mention was that, so here's the existing facility immediately adjacent to Home Safe, to Morse Geriatric. You've seen the slide, the overhead, I've got a video for you just to show, and this answers some of the question, or reinforces what the applicant was saying about the traffic and the location. I took the video on the following page, from that red dot. So here is, oops, if I do this correctly. So here's looking at the entrance to the easternmost of the three parcels, and then scrolling around towards the west. Really, the pavement kind of ends here, and I'll, it'll zoom in in a little, in a minute here to see. You got the sidewalk where it turns, and then the pavement of Forty- seventh Street. Let's see here, let me do this again. Is, it ends, so we'll just go over here. As I zoom in, so you can see that the pavement, and if anything that needs to be improved is part of the new site plan design, that will be reviewed as part of the site plan by our engineering department. It really ends right there. There's nothing, you can see the gate in the background. This is truly a road that does not have any impact for the neighbors, the residential to the south, or the apartment, the single-family or the apartments that you see to the south. The only ones, and you'll see, I took this right, a school was starting to let out, so you'll see where the traffic impact actually is on this road, and it's the buses that, that will come out. And this is all school and board property you see to the north, directly across from the existing driveway, and don't know if this is where their future driveway is going to line up, is the entrance exit to the Egrit Lakes Elementary School bus bay. I'll zoom in here a little bit on the video, if, and this is kind of just to represent, back in this area is, across Haverhill Road is where the existing facility is. Here, just to give you guys a relationship as to where it is in relationship to the existing site. You can't really see the buildings, and if you don't get too dizzy from my expert video skills. So then, as we come over here, and that is actually the Morse Life building that you see, I'll go a little further, right there, that is the Traditions residential part, this is actually independent living. If I, if, and then to the right a little bit more is where they have their short-term housing. But you see, once again, this is a good example, the only traffic that will be affected in any way would be the school traffic, and this site does not expect to have a lot of traffic impact with only fourteen kids that don't drive. So you've got, then this is just the landscaping you can see that would buffer the road and the vegetation between the apartments and the site. Obviously, when they redevelop, we will save what can be saved, what's appropriate, and then as part of the site plan review process, and they would go through a new, the site plan to answer, we don't know exactly how it's going to be laid out. I do want to show, just as an example, this is what the existing facility looks like. So you can see that they have, you know, our traditional-type architecture here, while it may change for the new development. One of the things that I wanted to point out on the existing facility is, even though they have twenty-four children now, when they came through and were approved back in the early to mid-two thousands, they had room for expansion and more buildings that they were allowed to build, and they never built them, and that's probably one of the other factors of why this lot is very, that they're on now is big, then they were able to restructure and go, and actually drop down from what would be a group home type three, more than fourteen residents, to a group home type two, which is seven to fourteen. So that's where we're at, they need the waiver. The Class B, because they're asking for the waiver, that's the process. Staff has found that there's no issues with their waiver standards, that they're asking for the twelve-hundred-foot reduction, or reduction from twelve-hundred feet, and it also meets all of the Class B standards that are in the code, that, and the applicant went over a couple of them, but the rest of the backup is in your material as far as infrastructure, traffic impacts and so forth, including adjacent to residential. Are there any questions to staff?
Questions? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for the project?
Good afternoon, for the record, Martin List, and I represent Morse Life Health System, and we fully support the requested waiver for the distance separation, and we look forward to seeing the project move forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the project? If not, we'll go into executive session. Does anyone have any comments? That being said, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, let me make one comment. I wish somebody from the neighborhood would have shown up to express a, an opinion one way or the other, so we could at least get a feedback from the community. Even though this is not moving the facility a significant distance, there is a change from where it's being moved to a change in the middle of a, a neighborhood right now. So it would be nice to hear from those neighbors, but I'm assuming that they were provided notice, and nobody has shown up to let us know one way or the other what their opinions are.
That's true, and that, that happens more often than not, so that should not be a surprise.
Mr. Chairman, in the same vein, am I correct in assuming that this project, when it comes in for site plan approval, or, does it have to go before the planning board, once ready to go fully?
Unless they build more than fifty, well, actually, no, they would not in any way need to go, it is going to be a staff-level approval. Unless they did not meet an element of the zoning and land development regulations, then they would have to come back before you for a variance to those, say they, for whatever reason on, I mean, the site's big enough, but they wanted to get a setback from the front or the side, or they would have to come back. Do not anticipate that with the size of the site and the fact that they have only twelve units that they're building, basically twelve residential units. If this was a multifamily, they could build out to fourteen dwelling units per acre. So, and I think in the background, a report, I said how many units could be on there, I don't, off the top, with a three-point-seven-acre site, that's what, fifty-seven, sixty-some units they could possibly build on there. And that's what the original, when the original owner came in to rezone the property, when they annexed in, they rezoned it to that, and they were planning to put townhouses. So this is a lot less impactful than the maximum development that could go on this property. Once again, even a townhouse development on this property would not go to planning board, because it would be less than a hun, ninety-nine units, this one will not as well.
But if I understand Ms. Brickman's presentation, she indicated that she spoke with the, the associate, the homeowners association, or the, or did I misunderstand that?
I did not personally, Matthew Latika did, so he, he's the CEO, so he can speak to that.
Okay, good afternoon. Yes, I did speak with their past.
Do identify yourself, please.
Sure, it's Matt Latika, CEO of Home Safe. So I did have a conversation, conversation on November the twenty-sixth with Carlos Piñero. He is the former board president, but he's currently on the board, and I talked to him about the project, and, you know, also said that, you know, we're going to be a brand-new neighbor of yours, I welcome you to come over to my existing facility to see exactly what it looks like, and talk to him about what we plan on doing. He said he did not have any problem, he's familiar with Home Safe, he knows what we do, and he's, you know, he's absolutely fine with it. He then referred me to the property manager, who's Dennis Gooding, and I have since placed two calls, one on the twenty-sixth at about ten o'clock, and then again on December the third, to reach out to the property manager. On both cases, I left messages, but then did speak to the secretary on the second one to inform her exactly of what the project was, and said we were coming before this committee, and if they had any questions about the project that we were putting in place, and she said, no, Dennis is the one that you would want to talk to, and again, I left that second voicemail on his.
Was the person who was on the board representing the board, or was he just an individual?
He's representing the board, so he is, well, he's on the board, but I assume that, you know, he would tell the others as well.
Okay.
And which, which association is this?
That's the Hawk, Fox Hall Hom homeowners Association, so they're directly to the, to the south of us.
Okay.
They, do they surround the property, basically, or on the west side?
South, and a little bit on the, just a teeny bit on the west, correct?
Thank you.
Question, the property, if it was sold ten years from now, like the previous property, would it still retain the group home designation for any other group home that want, who want to move in? That would be a concern of mine, because that is an elementary school, less than thirty-five, forty feet across the way. So I would like to get some clarification on whether the, the home, group home designation would apply to the next person if they decide to sell in five years, seven years, fifteen years, and we still have a school there.
Well, what's moving forward is to allow a group home type two. So any group home type two, which is seven to fourteen residents, could move in there. However, we do have requirements that inmate release is not a group home type two. That is not a protected class of any type, they would be, that's a different type of group home, so they would have to go for further appearance. But if elderly moved, if Home Safe sold an elderly, they want to move elderly in, or Alzheimer's, or, I don't know, you would, you could, they could come in, if they fell under the group home type two requirement. If it was a group home type three, they would have to come back here, because now it's a waiver, again, of the distance separation for a type three from another facility. As far as the underlying, if they sold, they could still sell and have residential go in there, that zoning does not change. So I, a little more than what you asked for, but the question that you asked, yes, it would be a type two, would have the same distance requirement.
Would, the community adjacent to it on the south side, would they be aware of this? Whether the, if it was sold, that's my concern. Knowing that they just moved from across the street to this site, which is now right next door to them, even though it's only a few hundred yards from where they were, are they aware that it possibly can be used for other than, and, and the word children always cuts to the heart, and so I don't want to be blindsided, or anyone else blindsided, by not taking in consideration what else could possibly go there if it's sold.
Well, the, the notice was for a group home type two to be located within twelve-hundred feet from another group home. So we did not specify that said it was children or not children, that's not, other than the title of, for home, children's place at Home Safe. That is not something that we, we put in notifications, or we put in this notification, or has put in notifications to the neighbors. I heard nothing from anybody after the mailers went out, or the notification. So typically, if people have, and Fox Hall, Fox Hall, when we took the zoning, when they annexed, this property annexed in, and I was the one that brought it through as the annexation, and we went through, and they came in and wanted the multifamily fourteen, and they may even have wanted, when they came in, one multifamily twenty, which would be twenty units per acre. We took it through all the way to City Commission, we got a lot of calls, did have meetings with Fox Hall about that particular use, they were worried about low-income housing, a lot of different things from the single family. So when those notices went out, and the applicants had reached out, we got something back. If somebody was going to have an issue, I would have heard about it when the mailers went out. Did not hear anything, so, you know, as you brought up, people not coming versus people coming, typically, if people don't like it, they're going to show up. If people don't have an issue with it, and granted, we did not specifically say, it could be elderly in the future, it's not elderly safe at home, but the, you know, the group home type two, that's usually the trigger, when some, you see the word in a mailer that says group home, that's a lot of times that staff, when we do these applications, that's when we see the trigger. It doesn't matter if it's kids, elderly, the people see the word group home, that's if they have an issue, is when we're going to get called. And by not getting called, I can only say that we had nobody that was, had, takes issue with this change. Hopefully, that answered your question.
And then I just want to quickly share with my colleagues up here, from what I'm thinking, is my understanding is this is a little over three acres, so if this doesn't move forward, they would be in their right to sell it. A developer could come in, and you said, what, seventy-plus units?
Yeah.
So if you're concerned about the children across the street, that would have a greater impact if they built a seventy-unit structure there to some commercial developer right across the street that, you know, from the children. So again, if we're looking at what's before us right now and what's presented, and if that's one of our colleagues' concern, I know that I'm not concerned with it based on what's presented today and what we're being asked to approve as a waiver. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, may I point out that in this instance, there are two sets of standards, which... standards which you're required to review for this application, and those are the standards for extra requirements, which is in your material, and the standards for granting a Class B special use permit. If it meets those standards, then they are entitled to the consideration. What may happen in the future is probably not within those standards. But if, if you decide it is, you'd have to find a standard that that applies to. And HomeSafe is a not-for-profit, and the only reason for selling was, well, two reasons. One, it's a windfall, and two, you're downsizing the, or the overall scope of HomeSafe's operation from a larger perspective to a smaller group home.
Correct. Morse Life was very generous in their offer to us, and so at the end of the day, we're going to have enough money to construct two brand-new, state-of-the-art campuses for these children, and then also have some additional dollars that will be placed into an endowment to help us in perpetuity. And as Ms. Brinkman said, these are state-of-the-art, every child will have their own bedroom, bathroom. It will be set up for them to heal from the trauma that they've experienced.
Okay.
I'll move that the zoning board of appeals-
Did you get publicly come in, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Grant the waiver for ZBA case number thirty-three seventy-nine is listed in the staff report dated December fifth, two thousand and nineteen. This motion is based on the determination that testimony presented at this hearing, along with the applications submitted, constitute a preponderance of competent and substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that the waiver requested satisfies all eight of the criteria required by the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations, Article nine, section ninety-four dash two seventy-three A two.
Second.
Move properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Well, then we also had the special use permit, correct? Okay. So I move that the zoning board of appeals grant application number thirty-three seventy-nine, a request by Joanie Brinkman of Urban Zone Kill Day Studios, on behalf of the Children's Place at HomeSafe Inc., for the approval of the Class B special use permit to grant a waiver to an additional standard for the use permitted with extra requirements, specifically the one-thousand-two-hundred-foot distance separation for a group home type II from another group home required by sections ninety-four dash two seventy-three D twenty-eight A two and C two of the zoning and land development regulations. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the applications submitted and staff report, which constitute competent and substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article two, section ninety-four dash thirty-six E three, four, and five, the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, so move. Congratulations. Now, Mr. Roach. Mr. Hyman had some questions he wanted to ask in reference to the-
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the petition that's coming before us at our next meeting relative to the piece of property that was purchased, and requests for variances on the setbacks because of the size of the property. There was a statement in the, in the information that we received that indicated that the petitioner attempted to buy the property next door, but the property is a ghost property and doesn't exist. And, you know, I got a couple things. I mean, I'm concerned that the city sold a piece of property, it's a non-conforming piece of property, and we're going to be asked to increase the nonconformity, first of all. Secondly, has anyone researched the property next door? And where are we on that?
So with regards to the property that was purchased, it is a legally established lot. It was properly plotted.
So it's part of a plotted subdivision?
So it wasn't an illegal subdivision or anything like that.
I understand.
So we sold a legally plotted property. The issue is, is that there is land to the north, albeit it is narrow, but there is a piece of land to the north of that subject site, that in essence is a gap between plots. And there was an error, it appears that there is an error between the recording of one plot, replating of another, and so forth. Obviously, we know surveying and so forth has evolved over the decades and, you know, and things like that. So it, the recording of those various plots has created this gap in there, in essence that it is not owned by anybody. It's not right-of-way, it's not a parcel that is owned by the city that we could have included with the subject property. What has been advised is that, and the applicant for that case has the ability to do it, but more than likely would have to go through some form of legal process to determine who is the rightful owner of that piece of property. And until that is done, we, as the city, do not have the ability to give it to the applicant, sell it to anybody, or what have you.
Has anyone done title search on the property?
Based upon our city surveyor's research, it's that gap in the plot that has been identified. But as far as legally determining who owns that, it's our understanding that they would have to go to the courts to do that.
I'm not the lawyer of the crowd, but-
I think what he's saying is that right now, the city has no obligation to do a title search, they're just looking at how the plots are surveyed and stuff. If someone was interested in knowing who owns title, that would be a legal matter, unless the new owners decide they could squat on it after so many years, have adverse possession over or something. But my understanding is the city has no obligation to find out who the owner is, neither would whoever purchased it from the city, because that's dealing with who legally owns it, whereas we're just evaluating before us what zoning and waivers and-
Correct. I mean, we've done the title searches for the properties that we own and have determined-
That's why the city hasn't bothered to do it, because there's no obligation for them to incur that cost or expense.
I understand that it's a, that would be a non-conforming lot in today's standards, but because it's platted, you can build on it like you can with the twenty-five-foot lots, or is that, am I looking at something? I mean, this is a platted lot, and you're saying that someone has the right to build upon it, right?
The lot that is a part of the, the first application, the first zoning board of appeals case on your agenda, was a legally platted lot, and yes, someone has the right to build on that lot. The issue being, similar to what you saw with the second case on your agenda, can they build a reasonably-sized home, you know, that has a right to everyone else who has a, you know, a lot within that zoning district? That is where they are requesting the variances, they have identified their hardship, and they are making that request to you.
It, my, you know, what hit me when I read through the, the materials was that there, there's this piece of property that the ownership is unknown, and so the gentleman can't go to. And I would submit, according, having checked with my very close real estate lawyer, who has her own title company, et cetera, and is familiar with these types of things, is that everybody, someone owns every piece of property. Blanket statement, okay? Not mine. And that, and that the first step in that would be doing a title search to see if, you know, who in fact owns the property. It's probably, if I had to guess, railroad to the back, but be that as it may. Can someone suggest to the, to the petitioner that they do a title search on that piece of property, so we can make that? You've done a title search?
No, we have informed the applicant that they have the right. They could go do the title search.
Okay.
They could file the necessary papers in the courts to try and obtain ownership to it, or determine who has ownership to it. They have been informed that they could do that. It's my understanding that they have chosen not to at this point, and move forward with the lot that they own, and the plans that they have prepared, and requesting the variances that they're requesting.
In that it's a lot, and it's a nice neighborhood, and, you know, the, the piece will be left out there, and who knows what, you know, it'll be, it may become a hazard for the city with people dumping on it, doing whatever. Can we suggest that this conversation happened after the, the main items on the agenda, and we're, that I'm concerned about it, when they come back forward to us to request the, the variances that they have on the-
You as a member of this board can make any, present any questions, whoever's presenting to us or to the city, you have that ability.
Right, and I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, because they've asked to postpone the petition being heard.
But that had to do with what was publicized, that's why it's being postponed, we're not hearing it today.
Yeah, postponement purely is dealing with inconsistency in the advertising-
I would have raised these questions to them and asked for him to take a postponement.
And you'll have that ability in January, whenever it's before us.
The applicant is completely content and moving forward with the lot that they have acquired, they've designed the house, and therefore they're requesting the variances.
Mr. Chairman, may I say, I point out to the members that a property owner is entitled to request any consideration the city offers in its code for the property it owns, and that is what obtains here. The property owner isn't required to go out and acquire additional property, nor is the city required to acquire property. But, but this applicant is entitled to request any benefit that the city code provides for the lot it owns, and this board is required to consider that request and make its decision based on applicable standards. And the property owner has been advised by staff of their rights and/or obligations as relates to getting the background on a property.
We've, correct, I mean, we've informed them of the process, and hence they're, they're before you with the variances on the parcel that they acquired. As far as the land to the north, we've informed that they have that right to go to, you know, do the title search, do the legal paperwork and so forth, to, you know, have the, the ownership of that land determined. But they are choosing to move forward with the land that they have acquired and make that, make that application to the board.
Is that prerogative?
Correct.
Thank you, I understand that. I was just on the, on the, as it was presented, indicating that the, that the ownership of the property is unknown. I, I just saw that in there, and it jumped off the page at me.
Okay. Is there any other business?
Was there a report from the member?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I won't be long, ten seconds. I attended the planning officials' training back on October fourth, which included board members from neighboring cities and neighboring counties, down to Broward and up to St. Lucy and Martin County. Very informative meeting, got to hear some of the same issues that we hear being discussed here, so, and there was something for everyone at the meeting, at the training. It didn't last all day, but they covered materials that would help someone like myself, who's fresh on the board, and they covered issues that would help someone that's been serving on the board for five, ten years. So I thought it was a very worthwhile class to attend, and I appreciate getting notification about it to attend it. So, thank you.
And just so you know, I believe, you know, we've done it for the last few years, but that is an annual seminar that is put on by the, the local section of our planning association. I was actually on the board that was cosponsoring and put that on. I would certainly encourage, if you haven't been to it, something to consider, you know, if you have that day available. I believe in the past, we, the city has covered the costs associated with that registration, so I would make, you know, make that encouragement to the board members. Even if you've been on the board for a number of years, there's always things that are changing with regards to urban planning, legalities of it, and so forth, so I'll make that.
Is there any printed material, John?
I'm sorry?
Any printed material for that?
Every year, there is a flyer that is put out with regards to, you know, registration information and so forth.
But no manual or booklet or?
When you register and you do attend, and Mr. Fields can correct me if I'm wrong, but you do receive a booklet of, you know, the various PowerPoint presentations and information that's presented at that meeting, so you leave with something in addition to the presentations you watch.
Yes, that is correct. They did provide a manual with all of the PowerPoint presentations from the planners. And again, plant, they didn't have just local planners, they had planners from all over the state that attended and did the presentation. I think it was five presenters that day.
Thank you. And have a nice Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, whichever you prefer to celebrate.
Yeah.
Enjoy. Thank you. We're adjourned.